I hereby call the special meeting Norwood City Council to order. Please rise for a prayer and pledge allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, as a body we congregate in this council chamber, we pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonsell.
Here.
Mr. Gabber.
Here.
Mr. Geraci.
Here.
Mr. Kelch.
Here.
Mr. Donardo.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Braden.
Here.
All members present, we have an amendment to the agenda. We have a letter that we would like to read from the hearing of the public, which Mr. Geraci is going to read for us. So we're going to add the amendment of the agenda right after the roll call before E. Okay? May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Bonsell. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Geraci. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonsell.
Yes.
Mr. Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo. Mr. Thompson.
Yep.
Mr. Braden.
Yes ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Mr. Geraci.
This is a mail I received from a resident at the state. His name is Ted Wells. He resides at 5019. First, I would like to say, I am in heaven today. I'm going to be warm. You were doing great work for the city. And I applaud your efforts. I know I've reached out to all of you in one way or another in support. Show of hands. I tune into meetings and follow home and the progress that has been made in these short few months has been very pleasing to me. I so enjoy throwing my two cents in on Facebook Live. Nonetheless, I am a citizen. You are elected officials. So here are my following concerns. I'd like to make things clear to you, your body and normal residents. My opinions are solely my own and I am not swayed by any other. I know there has been political tension because of the election. I want to sincerely say, I will always believe in what's best for the city. People are elected and we move forward. I don't stand for any political nonsense. Topic one is water billing situation. Just would like to point out that there is an obvious trend that needs to be investigated. I know the state has already passed basically a memorandum on election, so I suspect you follow their guidelines. You do have the power to weigh any late fees. I also hope that there will be discussion on an internal slash external audit to appease the residents. Topic two is the trax licensing transfer to Donna Cap LLC. I am all in favor of providing any business the opportunity they need to try. I don't know, Mr., I'm going to watch this last thing personally, but I'd love, let me say it, I lost my spot here. I'd love for him to be successful. The city is about a person or a business. It's about the trax. These licenses are granted to spur economic development. We can use Brooklyn as an example. They are granted to favorite businesses such as restaurants that have created 25-plus jobs and have a significant impact on tax revenue to the city. My theory in this situation is that somehow we have confused what economic development is. Putting up a nice sign, placing a few planners, hiring two to three workers is hardly developing. Again, just my opinion. This is nothing personal. Some may think otherwise. I would ask council to consider the website. Approving this transfer would set a vote for and a precedence that now may get your job to argue these to no end. It opens a scope, one in which I think that would hinder in more important things that need to be addressed. I could give you hypotheticals, but I think you all are smart enough to manage. I also would like to add that if we get a fix plus, it could be detrimental to the existing businesses that have been here for years. So in conclusion, I'd like to thank you all for listening to my concerns. I would have loved to come to state making the future happen to get through the current situation. It's important to note that I am not always right, nor am I, nor do I think I am. I know all of my opinions are flawed. It's my hope that we have an audit to the water billing just to see what went wrong. I also think it would be in the best interest of the city to not approve a trax transfer for Donna Cap LLC. There are many avenues they can pursue. Keep up the good work, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Geraci, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Wells. We do not have any other requests or correspondence, so we'll move on to item E, introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. Item E1, ordinance extending time to pay residential water bills originally due between March 12, 2020 and August 12, 2020 to the last day of the month following their due dates and declaring emergency. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Kelch. May I have a second?
What is this motion?
The motion was to have all three read.
Okay, okay.
Forgive me. Motion by Mr. Kelch, second by Mr. Geraci. Discussion. Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know there's a couple of people who want to speak on this issue and I would like to kick off. I have time right now to finish. And I'm going to treat the information on the stage fairly and those walls are fair to you. Anytime I can now be fair, please let me know when I'll circle back and fix it directly for the moment. So I think it's interesting that we find ourselves here. At the chance of our meeting, we're in the middle of a whole pandemic that we have not seen anything like in our generation. So every move we make and every step we take is new right now. We're doing a lot of learning, a lot of work in the block. We're asking ourselves, residents, to make adjustments themselves just to make it through the day, make it through the next month, the next week. And we have an issue here that we can have the power to correct, and that is our bar bill. We have a lot of residents that are getting higher bills than normal, and they're trying to be told by our administration to pay them or else you'd be subject to a fee. And to me, that's kind of a cavalier business as usual response when we are not operating business as usual right now. There are a lot of changes going on, and a lot of them will come with day to day. We have a lot of residents that are struggling right now financially due to the COVID-19 situation, that have lost employment, lost finances, and they're trying to make a buy. They're trying to do the best they can for the family. They have other bills to pay that are not just the water bill that comes every three months. There's a lot going on that we can take a look at that burnout. So I worked yesterday on why we're here today. So pretty much the whole month that you've spent getting hold of the mayor, the safety service director, the law department, even stretch to the water department, stop in, talk briefly with the way the water department. Two weeks now, I'm trying to ask the administration to allow some sort of relief to our residents to, for their late fees, push back due dates, assault it and let the city know, hey, we understand, and we're here to help you, we're here to represent you, not make it like we more of a burden by requesting you pay this bill in a matter of days while chasing or paying late fees on top of the money that we're asking for. So my attempts over the last two weeks were then refusal, which I consider to be refusal, to waive late fees, and I sold that S and P, not learned how about the S and P, to waive late fees for all residents, only one dollar case by case basis, economic replies. To me, this is a little disturbing because, again, it's a business as usual response. All right? We don't want to waive late fees for people that are constantly late or constantly need to be waived, but in times like this that we're facing today, I think those are some of the people I hear the most. They're going to run into those financial problems that need this help the most. And I think because of the COVID-19 situation alone, which is putting fights to strain on a lot of individuals, that right there goes to show that it's not a case by case individual basis. It's not just affecting a couple of people, and then a couple of people are just fine. Now, there might be some people that have not lost weight, but their life is definitely disturbed by this. I know mine is different, and I'm sure a lot of people sitting here today's lives have been disturbed and things have thrown a hole. And that creates an undue penalty on certain people, I'm not sure that they're trying to figure out how they're going to pay this. And then added in periodically, it seems to happen where we have unexpected high billing issues, where followed with the COVID-19 responses, things being shut down, the finances getting strained, that creates even more stress on finances, emotions, on life. I also asked in turn of getting some of the due date pushback, if you can wait for a letter for the residents of the city, something that we can share with our decisions from the administration, saying, hey, we understand you. You know, show them we understand what's going on. We are looking at ways to fix this. We are looking at things to do to help you during this time, and that was a more largely. And that's something right there that really kind of sets this emotion, that I understand we might have to look into things like software issues and things like that to make a proper change in the billing system again in our collection that could, but putting a little bit of time towards put a letter together that lets our residents know that we understand there might get problem here, there likely is a problem here, and we're going to do what we can to fix it, I think we go a long way. And I couldn't even get that, and that's very disappointing to me. Some questions and requests I do have, but the word is, I've had some root causes and concerns that quite few residents are calling in their water meter numbers. They are mailing blue cards pretty routinely, they try to write when they get it. Then there's thought going around that some of our workers in the water department are that they may not be through those numbers, and they're still estimating these accounts. So I would hope that that kind of practice, so who cares that, and what can we do to fix that? I would like to request that, you know, the administration steers management of the water department towards updating water department procedures and policies.
And I would like a copy of that as well, so I can be better gauged on how the water department conducts business, what they're expected, so that we can talk to the residents and let them know, hey, this is what they should be able to do, this is how they're expected to conduct themselves. And it's my understanding that we are looking at new billing software, and I think the mayor would kind of give a better timeline for this than I can. And I think it's slated for June. However, I would like, if possible, to see that bumped up. I think that's an issue we can definitely meet on sooner and vote on sooner and get that taken care of. I think from what my research shows that that will go a long way in solving some of these issues that we're having with the billing system. And one of the big things I've been thinking about for a while now, and that I want to ask the administration to do, is seek an outside audit of the water department, the finances and the billing procedures therein, as well as an internal audit with our auditor's office, to hopefully do a couple of things. And I think by having two different audit reports, one outside of the city, one in the city, we can compare the two. And if there is a problem, then we have very good concrete evidence that there is a problem, and we can work towards a solution to fix it. If there's not a problem, again, we have concrete evidence that, hey, there's not a problem here. Maybe it is the software, maybe it is a process that could better be explained, but we'll have that evidence at our fingertips. The residents will know that there is something going on or there's not something going on, and we will get to the bottom of it. I think that is going to be important for this administration, this council, to do. We ran on transparency, and we have a lot of residents kind of fed up with what's going on and how things have been. And quite frankly, I'm fed up with how things are going on and how they've been. And I would like us all today to vote on this ordinance, let our residents know that we understand them, and we understand what they're dealing with and what some of them are going through, and that we're going to do this to help them pay the bill in extended time, set up payment plan, not have any sort of worry about extra fees and penalties, and build that relationship with these residents, that we are going to look into issues. If there's a problem, we'll find it and we'll fix it. We're not going to let it go. We're not going to push it under the rug. We're going to handle business, because we are here not only for them, but because of them. They chose every one of us to be in every one of these chairs that we're in right now today. And during a time like this, to ask them or tell them to pay the bill or get a fee, I think is a gross injustice of what we're here to do. When problems happen, leadership steps up, and I think we all have the opportunity today to step up big time and be the leaders that our residents voted us in here to be, and I would like to see that happen. I think this is an inherited issue, and we can do one of two things. We can let it keep continuing, or we can work together right here, right now, today to fix it and take that first step towards fixing it and let our residents know that we have their backs, we have their interests. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Anyone else? Mr. Geraci.
If there is one point up, microphones aren't working. Please. Microphones are not working.
They're saying they are now, I think.
They are? Okay. I got messages that the mics weren't working. Sorry.
We're good now?
I think they're saying they are now, yes.
Mr. Geraci.
So I may end up repeating a little bit of what he says. I did type up a little bit myself. So first, I'll start off with, why are we here? Basically, we're here for this meeting to ensure the residents can pay or are able to set up a pay schedule without penalty and waiving late fees. We as a body believe that this situation is not unique and that this has been occurring frequently, and that this is an ongoing problem that needs to be fixed. When my parents moved out of the city approximately nine months ago, they received their final bill that was four times the normal amount. Four times the normal amount. I found this horrifying as my father was meticulous about sending or dropping off that blue card to the water department. He never missed it, never. However, the COVID-19 situation is unique, and we as a body need to understand that we need to work to assist the residents as best as we can. This is a temporary solution, however. We cannot get to a permanent solution without a starting point, and that's where we start with this pushing back of the due dates. We, several of us have been looking into a certain order of repair to repair the problem and resolve it. So this doesn't happen in the future. Some of the things Councilman Kelch touched on was the internal and external audits. One thing I would look for within the external and internal audits are how are the readings input into the system if the meter reader inputs them into his handheld device? What is the process when someone sends in the blue cards or turns them into the department? Do they put them in a box? Do they put them in a file? Do they immediately go into the computer? Who inputs them? Same way with somebody calling it in. How's that process worked? Do they write it on a piece of paper and throw it into a box? We need to figure that process out as well. Another item that I was discussing with Councilman Kelch is that the audits need to pull a random number of cards and check for accuracy when those cards are entered into the system. For example, a card is mailed and the reading doesn't match from the card to the system. This comes into quality control. What quality control setting systems do we have set up with the water department? Do we have somebody going back and checking these numbers? Do we have somebody going back and checking the accuracy of the inputs? If not, I think we need to get something set up for it. Why are we receiving bills and being required to pay these bills within four days of receiving it? You know, I've come across times that I've gotten a bill, but I don't get a paycheck until the next week. So I get the $25 late fee myself because I can't pay it the week that I get it. So I think we need to look at how we can push those due dates back a little longer than four days. Is there neglect within the water department? If we find out within these audits that there's neglect within the water department of either people inputting wrong information, being lazy, not just not putting in information and just estimating, we need to take care of that immediately, because to me, neglect should not be causing the residents more money. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Geraci. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the council members who put this together and brought this to us today. Really appreciate. I just want to add a little bit, a little that I haven't heard you say, which I think you've covered pretty much everything, but I've also heard from residents that when they do try to get an understanding of why their water bill is higher, they're often feeling like they're given the runaround. They're given, oh, it's a leak, or it was estimated and now it's not. They're not being given solid, concrete, demonstrable factual answers that says this is why it is. And I think that there's a few options that like could happen. If your water bill is higher than normal, the first thing that it potentially could be is it's a leak, and I think that's one of the first things that people hear to get checked. Further, next, I would say that they've been on a billing cycle that's been relying on estimates, and for whatever reason, they got their meter read that time and their estimate was too low. I think a third option could be that you are actually paying based on actual numbers, and then for some reason, an estimate came in and didn't get actual numbers, and it was too high, and I think you all added another, sending in blue cards and having them not be. These should be fairly easy for somebody with access to the system to be able to determine one of these four-ish kind of things, to tell somebody. Should be fairly easy. If someone says, my bill is double what it has been for the last three billing cycles, they should be able to look and say, oh, those last three billing cycles were estimated, we got somebody out there to read it, and you're paying low. I mean, that's literally the kind of information that I think people are looking for and that they're not able to get. So that's, to me, that's a bare minimum level of service that we should be able to provide our residents, and we're not doing. Another point I just wanted to say is I would have been happy to support this ordinance if it had gone farther and completely waived fees for the next three, six months or whatever until we get out of this current situation. I just want you to know that I would have been with you on that one. I was still planning on voting with you for this one, but we could do more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anyone else? Mr. Kelch?
Yeah, I'd like to, also, I didn't actually have mic issues, that I am calling for an internal audit as well as an external audit. I think that as well as getting it updated, and I would like the mayor to make sure management is involved in the process of looking into these procedures and practices, policies of the water department. Things like Mr. Thompson just said, I think will be covered in that, and I think could be aided to be better by that. And I would like to be kind of, I'm curious to see how that will turn out. I want to get a copy of that. I would think all council members should get a copy of that. When I said that we had refusal with the administration to waive fees, I wanted to cite, I didn't want to just be attacking at the mayor. I wanted to cite the ordinance, the number of Norwood codified ordinances, apologies, chapter 925.07, under paragraph D, it states that the safety service director is authorized to waive late fees up to 45, to not exceed 45 days for indemnity, relief, things of that nature. And it doesn't state that that's just case by case or if it's blanket waiver. It's pretty vague, and Keith Moore did mention that. It was pretty vague, open interpretation, I take it. So I would like to cite that. So if anybody would like to go look that up, they can see it for themselves there, and I can make it shareable on my page later if need be. And I would like to hear from the mayor, if he would like to speak on his position of why he did not want to take that stance. Again, I don't want it to seem like it's an attack. I'm just trying to speak on the facts and fairly on this. So I would be open to hearing from Mayor Schneider on his thoughts about that.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd rather not comment at this time. I'd rather everybody get a chance to talk first, and then I know exactly where to go with this stuff, so.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bonsell?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. So yeah, I definitely want to thank Mr. Kelch and Mr. Geraci for the work that you all did here. I know that, you know, there's been questions that I've asked, and I'm going to bring up here too. And I know that this water issue is extremely complex. I think that Mr. Kelch hit the nail on the head when he, you know, he did use the word inherited, and, you know, this administration with all the other stuff that's been going on also has to, you know, figure out how to correct some of the issues that have gone on. So, you know, most of the issues were said. One of the issues, though, that wasn't talked about is how, you know, is how bills are estimated. And it appears that when bills are estimated, that they're purposely estimated too low. You know, basically, every body that's reached out to me except for two in the past year when they have issues with their water, it's almost always because the estimates were coming in, and every billing cycle, they'll estimate two less. So it's like a staircase down until it gets to the minimum at 10 units. And so even though if they were using 17, if they're using 20, whatever, they were still getting billed for the 10 units. And, you know, it's problematic because exactly what's going on now, so then when people do get an actual reading, they've been underestimated, and so they're now getting these surprise bills. And it's really come to an issue because we didn't have water. I think there was three to four months potentially where the water meter reader was injured, and he wasn't able to get there. So a lot of people, even, some people say they didn't get their blue cards, and I totally believe them, but some people did, and, you know, I forget to call in those readings too if I get a blue card at times. So, I mean, it's just completely a normal thing. So the fact that we, some people had one or two billing cycles where maybe they didn't call it in, and now they're getting this, that's another part of it. With the COVID-19, with where we're at now, it's going to be an issue even in a couple of months, because right now, they're not going into the houses to do the meter readings right now. They're putting the blue card for everybody because they don't want the meter reader to get the thing or to spread it to people if he were to accidentally get it somehow. So we're going to, I mean, we're going to keep dealing with this issue, and really, you know, I mean, the two things that I really want to see is that we've got
All of us have been looking into a certain, into a certain order of repair and to repair the problem and resolve it. So this doesn't happen in the future. Some of the things Councilman Kelch touched on was the internal and external audits. One thing I would look for within the external and internal audits are how are the reading input, how are the readings input into the system if the meter reader inputs them into his handheld device? What is the process when someone sends in the blue cards or turns them into the department? Do they put them in a box? Do they put them in a file? Do they immediately go into the computer? Who inputs them? Same way with somebody calling it in. How does, how's that process worked? Do they write it on a piece of paper and throw it into a box? We need to figure that process out as well. Another item that I was discussing with Councilman Kelch is that the audits need to pull a random number of cards and check for accuracy when those cards are entered into the system. For example, a card is mailed and the reading doesn't match from the card to the system. This comes into quality control. What quality control setting systems do we have set up with the water department? Do we have somebody going back and checking these numbers? Do we have somebody going back and checking the accuracy of the inputs? If not, we need, I think we need to get something set up for it. Why, why are we receiving bills and being required to pay these bills within four days of receiving it? You know, I've come across the times that I've gotten a bill, but I don't get a paycheck until the next week. So I, I get the $25 late fee myself because I can't pay it the week that I get it. So I think we need to look at how we can push those due dates back a little longer than four days. Is there neglect within the water, within the water department? If we find out within these audits that there's neglect within the water department of either people inputting wrong information, being lazy, not just, not putting in information and just estimating, we need to take care of that immediately because to me neglect should not be causing the residents more money. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the, the council members who put this together and, and brought this to us today. Really appreciate. I just want to add a little bit to, a little that I haven't heard you say, which I think you've covered pretty much everything, but I've also heard from residents that when they do try to get an understanding of why their water bill is higher, they're often feeling like they're given the runaround. They're given, oh, it's a leak or it's a, it was estimated and now it's not. They're not being given solid, concrete, demonstrable factual answers that says this is why it is. And I think that there's a few options that, that like could happen. If your, if your water bill is higher than normal, the first thing that it potentially could be is it's a leak. And I think that's one of the first things that people hear to get checked. Further, next I would say that they've been on a, on a billing cycle that's been relying on estimates and for whatever reason, they got their meter read that time and their estimate was too low. I think a third option could be that you are actually paying based on actual numbers and then, and then for some reason an estimate came in and didn't get actual numbers and it was too high. And I think you all added another, sending in blue cards and having them not be, these are, should be fairly easy for somebody with access to the system to be able to determine one of these four-ish kind of things to tell somebody. It should be fairly easy. If someone says, my bill is, is double what it has been for the last three billing cycles, they should be able to look and say, oh, those last three billing cycles were estimated. We got somebody out there to read it and you're paying low. I mean, that's literally the kind of information that I think people are looking for and that they're not able to get. So that's, to me, that's a bare minimum level of, of service that we should be able to provide our residents and, and we're not doing. Another point I just wanted to say is, is I would have been happy to support this ordinance if it had gone farther and completely waived fees for the next three, six months or whatever until we get out of this current situation. I, I just want you to know that I would have been with you on that one. I'll still plan on voting with you for this one, but we could do more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anyone else? Mr. Kelch?
Yeah, I'd like to, also I had an issue with my issues that, that I am calling for an internal audit as well as an external audit. I think that as well as getting it updated and I would like the mayor to, to make sure management is involved in the process of looking into these procedures and practices, policies of the water department. Things like Mr. Thompson just said, I think will be covered in that and I think could be aided to be better by that. And I would like to be kind of, I'm curious to see how that will turn out. I want to get a copy of that. I would think all council members should get a copy of that. When I said that we had refusal with the administration to waive fees, I wanted to cite, I didn't want to just be attacking at the mayor. I wanted to cite the ordinance, the number of Norwood codified ordinances, apologies, chapter 925 dot 07 under paragraph D, it states that the safety service director is authorized to waive late fees up to 45, to not exceed 45 days for indemnity relief, things of that nature. And it doesn't state that that's just case by case or if it's blanket waiver. It's pretty vague and Keith Moore did mention that. It was pretty vague, open to interpretation, I take it. So I would like to cite that. So if anybody would like to go look that up, they can see it for themselves there and I can make it shareable on my page later if need be. And I would, I would like to hear from the mayor if he would like to speak on it, on his position of why he did not want to take that stance. Again, I don't want it to seem like it's an attack. I'm just trying to speak on the facts and fairly on this. So I would, I would be open to hearing from Mayor Schneider on his thoughts about that.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd rather not comment at this time. I'd rather everybody get a chance to talk first and then I know exactly where to go with this stuff, so.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bonzel?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. So yeah, I definitely want to thank Mr. Kelch and Mr. Dracy for the work that you all did here. I know that, you know, there's been questions that I've asked and I'm going to bring up here too. And I know that this waters issue is, it's extremely complex. I think that Mr. Kelch hit the nail on the head when he, you know, he did use the word inherited and, you know, this administration with all the other stuff that's been going on also has to, you know, figure out how to correct some of the issues that, that have gone on. So, you know, I think, you know, most of the issues were said. One of the issues though that wasn't talked about is how, you know, is how bills are estimated. And it appears that when bills are estimated that they're purposely estimated too low. You know, basically everybody that's reached out to me except for two in the past year when they have issues with their water, it's almost always because the estimates were coming in and every billing cycle they'll estimate two less. So it's like a staircase down until it gets to the minimum at 10 units. And so even though if they were using 17, if they're using 20, whatever, they were still getting billed for the, the 10 units. And, you know, it's problematic because exactly what's going on now. So then when people do get an actual reading, they've been underestimated and so they're now getting these surprise bills. And it's really come to an issue because we didn't have water read. I think there was three to four months potentially where the water meter reader was injured and he wasn't able to get there. So a lot of people, even, some people say they didn't get their blue cards and I totally believe them, but some people did. And, you know, I forget to call in those readings too if I get a blue card at times. So, I mean, it's just completely a normal thing. So the fact that we, some people had one or two billing cycles where maybe they didn't call it in and now they're getting this, that's, that's another part of it. With the COVID-19 was where we're at now, it's going to be an issue even in a couple of months because right now they're not going into the houses to do the meter readings right now. They're putting the blue card for everybody because they don't want the meter reader to get, to get the thing or to spread it to people if he were to accidentally get it somehow. So we're going to, I mean, we're going to keep dealing with this issue and really, you know, I mean, the two things that I really want to see is that we've got to get, one, we're never going to get this fixed, I think, until we, everybody, every billing cycle gets an actual reading. And whether that's, I mean, it could be that it's called in, but I mean, I think it could, has to be some, eventually it's going to have to get electronic. I mean, there's other cities that have done that. And if we get an actual reading every time, then it's going to, you know, it's going to significantly reduce the amount of bills that ever get estimated. I think that's, that's the ultimate end game because if not, we're going to be talking about, I mean, citizens are going to be calling about this for, for years to come whenever they do finally get their actual reading. You know, the other issue again is the, is estimating too low. And I did reach out to the safety service director and the mayor about this. I know they were looking into it, but we've got to change the formula so that we're not underestimating bills. And maybe there's a reason why they're underestimating them and if so, I'd love to hear it, but I just, I can't imagine what it would be because, I mean, essentially we're just setting the city up for failure and we're setting citizens up for failure by constantly underestimating their bill. And to me, that's a very frustrating thing. It's not, it's something that's been going on for years. I mean, I was fighting it with the last administration, but I'm really hoping that at this point we really need to get that fixed and we need to do whatever we can to, to make that right. So again, I support this ordinance. I actually think, you know, even if we didn't have COVID-19 and it was just the issues, I think this ordinance would be entirely justified. Or if there were no other issues and it was just COVID-19, this ordinance would be entirely justified. But together it's even more justified. So, you know, I'm very pleased with that. And the last item I just wanted to note is that I very much agree, I think it was Mr. Kelch or Mr. Dracy that talked about the short billing window. You know, I very much think that we need to increase that, whether it's 21 days or 30 days, just knowing that it takes time to print the bills and get them mailed and get them to people. So, yeah, with that, again, just want to thank you all very much and looking forward to voting on this.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Dracy?
To kind of touch on Mr. Bonzel's comments, as far as we inherited the problem, we absolutely did. I completely agree with that. I did talk to someone who had been on council in the late 90s, early 2000s. I'm sure everybody can figure out who that would be. And I was told that it was looked, it was looked into to get the electronic meters at the time because they were coming out brand new and it was the new fad and nobody pulled the trigger on it. And since then, you know, 20 years later, here we are, right in a position where we're still in the stone age of having somebody walk into a house and, and get the reading. I think that is one thing that we need to look into and see if we're able to do that, if our budget sustains that. If not, maybe we look into Greater Cincinnati Water Works and see if we can work something out with them as far as providing services of billing and, and things. And maybe see if we can get some meters from them or see what it's going to cost through them to get it. I do know that Norwood, I haven't looked into it completely yet. I haven't finished my investigation, so to speak, into what it costs us versus other communities. However, I do know that about a year ago, speaking with some residents in Gulf Manor, that they, they're about on par with us. I do know they get monthly bills, which is right around between 99 to 110 thou, or $110 a month. So if you add that up to three months, that's about right where I have been charged, somewhere around three, between three and $300 a month, every three months. However, I haven't been able to complete my financial numbers yet to see if we're on par with anybody or if we're paying higher. I'm still working on that.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Anyone else? Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm, I'm hearing everybody and I don't think anybody's voting against this tonight. It's kind of a, you know, who's going to speak out against this? Nobody. But I do remember, I'm probably one of the few ones that remember the last time that the meters, the meters were changed. And maybe some of you do, but I do. And immediately when the meters were changed last time, your bills went up 30, 60, 90, $120, I can, something like that immediately. They came in, they took your old meter, they installed a new one, your bills went up immediately. From that moment on, you were paying more for your water. So I remember that. So when you go talking about changing the meters out, things like that, that's what you have to look forward to. So I believe that. If you are responsible, who's responsible here? If you are responsible for your water bill in your home, you should be keeping a log. You should be writing that down once a month, twice a month, the numbers on your meter and you will get a bill and it will say estimated or it will say actual. And if it says actual, your numbers will be on that bill. So who is responsible for making sure your water bill is correct? Is it us or is it you who's paying the bill? So, and, and that, that's another comment. So, I mean, I meticulously, on my four properties, we write it down twice a month. When our bill comes, we check it. And if there's a problem, what do you do? You immediately call the water department. Every single time I've ever had an issue and I've phoned the water department, I've been, I've had very responsive, oh, there's an issue. Okay, well, we won't make, we won't charge you the late fee. So if you call the water department and there is an issue, they'll work with you. I've never heard, I mean, you know, and I, I understand that there's a, you know, there's, somebody's always going to have an issue, but they'll work with you. So I would say keep a record of your water. Write it down. Nine times out of 10, you have a leak. If your water bill is high, you have a leak and you have to fix that leak. I mean, or several leaks. So I'll be voting for this and I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I appreciate the fact that we want to help our residents during this time and I, I get it, but I also recognize the responsibility that lies on that bill payer to keep track and notice a problem immediately and then handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Gabbard, sir?
Yeah, there's been a lot of questions raised and I, I would just encourage that all those questions be written, submitted to the clerk, have the clerk send a letter to the mayor with all those questions and ask for a response back. That way we can all get all the questions answered and make sure that, you know, we get, we're, we're not going to remember all the questions tonight. And by sitting here and asking all the questions, this is going to look like a deposition. It'd be better to have them all written down and if any of us others have questions, we all submit the questions. That way they can be answered and then we can put the answers out, you know, through whatever media that we have to let people know what those answers were, but just an idea.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Anyone else? Mr. Kelch?
If I could, I would like to respond to Mr. Brayden. I, I agree in the sense that all the residents do have responsibility of their own water meter numbers and billing and all that, but I would like to remind everybody that the city does, much like any service, have a responsibility to make sure that we're offering a productive and quality service to the residents. I think that, I don't think Mr. Brayden meant it this way, but I, I feel like if we just put the burden on them and it comes off as if we're just like sneaking something by and oh, if you don't catch it, I would just like to iterate that we have, we have a responsibility as well. It's a shared responsibility, all right, of making sure that we're giving them a quality product when it comes to water. And I think the audits will prove that one way or the other. I think looking at the policies and procedures of the office will do that one way or the other. Otherwise then we're talking, are we, should we be in the water business if we can't provide the baseline minimums? Should we even be in the water business? That's the conversation at that point. So I would like to, to just say that we, we also have a shared responsibility in our billing system.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Anyone else? Mr. Dracy?
To follow up on Councilman Kelch, again, for Mr. Brayden, sorry, I apologize. But, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from, that the residents do have a responsibility or maybe should be keeping track of their numbers. Not going to disagree. I, I don't, I don't do that. However, it is our water department's job to make sure that those numbers are correct. If somebody calls it in, if somebody brings in a blue form, it is their job to input that information in properly. That is what they get paid for. We need to find out where the mistakes are, where they're going wrong with this. What is it? Where is the problem? Is the problem with the software? Is the problem with the, the employees? Where is the problem? That's what we need to find out. That's what these employees get paid to do is, is to put numbers in properly. If we didn't as a council put numbers in properly into our budget, what would happen? We'd be in trouble. So we need to make sure that, that everything works the way it's supposed to be, proper procedures are followed, proper policies put in there and, and that there's a good system set in place so that this doesn't happen in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Anyone else? Mayor Schneider?
Everybody's finished? Are you sure there's not one more person that wants to echo what somebody else said?
Maybe.
All right. Well, thanks. You know, there's, there's a couple of interesting points to it. One is that we have, that I feel that I have a fiduciary responsibility and each of you have a fiduciary responsibility, meaning that you have the responsibility for the trust of money, the trust that is placed in you to handle the city's money properly. Myself as the mayor, I will not take it upon myself to unilaterally, one person make a decision to change something that affects what's been going on in the city for years and years. So when you say the mayor should have just waived fees, why don't I just waive everybody's? Why don't I just say nobody has to pay water for the next six months because I'm the mayor and I could do that, right? Well, no, actually I can't. I could not do that and I don't want to do that, nor can I waive everybody's fees unilaterally. When this came up, when, when Mr. Kelch, when Councilmember Kelch asked me for that, I said, really the only way to do that is to bring council together and council would make a decision, much like you are doing today, you are making a decision to do, to waive the fees. You know what? That's fine by me. That's, that's all good. Actually, I probably agree more with, with Mr. Thompson, Councilman Thompson's idea because quite frankly, I don't think this is going to be, I don't think this is going to be a quick fix. I don't think, I think waiving the fees for the amount of time that you're doing it, we're going to end up at the same hurdle here in the future pretty quickly for a couple of different reasons, but I, I do think that's going to continue. But one person, me, the mayor, making that decision is not the right way to make that decision. That's why I'm here today. That's why I came to this special meeting because three council members got together and said, let's have a council meeting, let's discuss this, get it out in the open, let's make a decision. That's the right way to do it. I coached Councilmember Kelch to do that. That's what I, I said you should do. I also have talked to many people and said, we will waive fees. I, I talked to people, I went on Facebook Live and I said, you've got to call, you've got to call the building department, you've got to talk to them, you've got to work with them. They will waive fees, they'll work with you on those things on a case by case basis. The same way it has been for years. If you had a problem with your water reading, you could call in and, and on a case by case basis, they would do that. So that's, nothing's changed there. Now you guys are making a change and that's fine. That's, that's, quite frankly, that's how it's supposed to work. So more power to you. That's what council does. The other part is to remember that, and I want to work with city council. As the mayor, the last thing I want to do is build up a wall against city council and the mayor's office, but you guys have to realize the mayor doesn't really work for city council. So you can't say, hey, you got to send a letter right now to the mayor because the mayor doesn't have to do that. You have a clerk of council, you have a secretary of council, you have a president of council. Those people, that's your administrative staff. If you want a letter to go out to the whole city, council can do that. You guys can do that through your people right here, but I, I don't have to do that just like you couldn't tell the auditor, you couldn't tell the treasurer, nor the law director, you want a letter going out right now. But they don't really have to do that. I don't have to do that. So I, I guess I'm, I'm saying just, you know, you guys need to recognize there are some differences in what council does and what the administration does. You want a heartfelt letter sent out to somebody, write that letter. You're a council member, you can do that. You can have your, you can have your secretary, you can request for your secretary to do that or your clerk of council or your, I don't know how you guys want to work that, but you can. But, but really it's, it's a fine line and I clearly want to work with council. And I'll, like Mr. Gabbard said, put those, put those comments together and we'll talk about those things and I'll, I'll try my best to get you guys answers for those things. I'm not trying to build a wall, but I am trying to say, you know, there are some different areas of responsibility that you guys have that I have and there are some things that I've got to do and things that you guys are required to do. Let's, let's not get out of our lanes. Somebody, somebody said that in one of the meetings. So that's an important part of it. Waiving fees doesn't, and this goes back to Mr. Thompson's, waiving the fees does not fix the problem. And I understand that there is a problem. And I understand that this problem has been there for a long time. And quite frankly, a lot of it is the software and the way estimating goes on. And a lot of it is how the office works and what, what we're, what we're able to accomplish there at certain times. And a lot of it is, I think somebody over here said policies and procedures and how are we running that office? All of those things, absolutely, you guys are hitting on all the different areas that need to be addressed within this. You guys, I think Councilman Kelch talked about doing an internal and an external audit. Well, I'm not sure who council members have that is going to do the internal audit, but council can easily say, we're going to put together a team that we want to do that. Maybe it would be part, one of the committees that gets together and says, we want to find, just like the, the financial recovery committee or commission, those, there are a couple of citizens that have a background in accounting and, and financial backgrounds. You guys can pull those people together and you guys can start working to get, that, that team can do that no problem as an internal audit within the city. Feel free, that's something you guys can do, absolutely. Doing it as a, as an internal and external, when you say that, I'm not sure what that means because we're already paying the state of Ohio for the auditors, I think $50,000 this year for their internal auditing. They're not going to take on something like this. So are you going to hire somebody? Is council going to hire somebody to do that? Which council can do that? You can find an auditing firm that will come in and do a forensic analysis of what's going on there. I find it, I, I would see it as being unwise to spend money that way. We've got a couple of things going on and this is, this is stuff that's going on right now. You know, we're paying for a, a analysis of our water system and we'll have that over the next six months. I guess it's two months ago that we signed off on it. We said it was going to be eight, so in six months. That's to tell us what we're doing with this water distribution system. You know, myself, if we didn't have that going on right now, I'd be the first person standing right here saying, we need radio read in every one of those meter, on every one of those meters. Mr. Brayden, I don't remember when, they've never replaced all the meters at one time. They've, out of the 60, I think it's about 6,800 meters, 65 to 6,800, 6,800 meters, there have been 2,000 Neptune meters that have been replaced with the new meters where they can actually take the head off and put that radio read, the RFI system on it. So that's 2,000 out of the 65 something. So if we were not right in the middle of our analysis of whether that, whether frankly, the city of Norwood is going to be in the water distribution game and what we're going to do with those water towers and all that, if we weren't in the middle of that, I'd be saying, right now, we need to get that system going. But we're right, we've already, we've already allocated money to an analysis of that part of it. I don't disagree, there are changes and there are already changes taking place with the software. There's a software upgrade coming. I know that our superintendent has already looked at the way estimated billing is done. We are looking at policies and procedures in the office. We're looking at timelines on how billing goes out. We're looking at how the high-low, the high, there's a high-low report that gets ran. We're looking at when that gets looked at and how we do things there. So all the, I hope, hopefully you won't just send me a whole list of questions, you'll also send me those ideas because I heard about five or six ideas here that need to be implemented, things that we need to look into. And hopefully you'll, you'll also list those things out when you send that to me because there are, there are action items that clearly we need to be working on. So those, those are important aspects of it. Write a letter, I guess the, one of the other notes I, just to write a letter, I, I don't really write letters for people. I write letters from the, the mayor's office, but if council wants a letter written... I write letters from the mayor's office, but if council wants a letter written, you've got a staff to do that. I am bound and determined to work as the mayor in the best interest of all the community members. You know, when we talk about waiving fees, there are a lot, a lot of people in this city that actually are doing, they're monitoring their water. They make sure that their bill is right, and they haven't paid a late fee in years, years. And then there are quite a few that pay late fees all the time, and for no good reason. Most of the people that I look at, and it's like, "Well, why is this person paying a late fee?" You wonder how they would let, some people just let it slip by. And so, there's, there are, there is some, there's absolutely responsibility on the consumer's side of this also. And I'll give you a case in point, and I know, Mr. Kelch, you talked about, "It's our responsibility to read that meter." We can't get in half these houses. They don't provide us keys. We don't walk around, we don't come home. They come home from work at 8:00 at night. Well, our water meter's working, reader is working through the day, and we don't have keys to their house. I know he hasn't had a key to my house in years, just because my side door lock got changed. I do my reading myself, but there are an awful lot of people that are very, very suspicious about anybody coming into their house. You don't think that the Cincinnati Gas and Electric, Duke Energy, that they put all those radio reads and all their meters are on the outside for any, they do it because they know they can't get into the basements. But the water meter has to be in a heated, right, a heated location so that it doesn't freeze up, so it has to be in the basement. So, we really do have to look at, you know, if we are in the water distribution system in the future, we need to look at what we're going to do and how we're going to upgrade those. But that's sort of a process, a plan that goes down the road. I think that council absolutely should be working, you know, maybe put it into a committee and put together a strike force that's going to do an audit, an internal audit, pull all the reports and try to figure out, you know, what are some areas? And I definitely would like to see the administration working with the people that are on that team, and we'll try to get all the reports we can, and we'll try to figure out what is the root cause, what's the root cause of this, and how do we make sure it doesn't happen in the future? Because I totally agree, we don't need this in our community. We've got enough. We don't need more of these highs and lows where you get a water bill and you're mad every other year because something happened. So, you know, I'm with you guys when it comes to fixing the system, and I do feel like there are actions being taken right now. I know it's for people who are just sitting out there in the audience or sitting at home during this COVID-19 crisis, you feel like, "I want this taken care of, and I want it taken care of, not just today, but tomorrow," because everybody's sitting around. But everybody's not sitting around. There's still a lot of work being done. There's still a lot of challenges that people are facing, and you got to keep that in mind, that there's progress being made. It doesn't happen overnight. We'd love to see it happen overnight, but it's going to take a little while, so. I welcome your comments. I welcome a discussion on anything that I said. If you feel like I work for you guys, you know, let's hear it, because I'd like to have that discussion too, if that's really what you, the road you want to go down.
Mr. Kelch?
Thank you, Mr. President. If possible, I'd like to respond to the Chair of the Mayor. I just want to make it pretty clear from my perspective, if I've left anything sort of open to interpretation. As a coach myself, for many years now, almost a decade, I did not feel coached. I didn't feel very coached. I felt the responses that I got to my inquiries and my pleads to have something done, it was lacking. I felt it was lacking. I didn't get any sort of, "Hey, I don't want to do this because what you just explained to us." That would have been awesome to have. I didn't get, "Hey, you like the idea of this, but what about this instead?" Or, "I like this, but I don't want to be the one to pull that trigger." I would like council to be. All right? We are not here because I was coached to be here. We are here because for the whole month of April, I've gotten, I've not got a decent night's sleep, because we got people that are dealing with all these crazy water bills and figuring out how the ways they're going to pay it in four damn days. And there's two other council members that agree, and hopefully, seven of them by the end of this meeting, we vote. Okay? All right? I've asked many times, many times, on the phone, on text, on email, to get help with this, to get our residents help with this, and I've not got a nice cordial response of coaching and, "Hey, here's how you do it. Here's the process. This is what you should do." And I see you just kind of went like that. What I got from you was, I can pull it up right now if you would like me to quote it, but it was a nice, short little email, I think I can remember it. It said, "I, at this time as mayor, do not think or want to have my SSD waive late fees for everybody across the city. We are offering case-by-case waiver late fees for individuals that reach out to us that are not frequent flyers, and they know who they are, apparently." That's what I got. And at the bottom of that email, in another sentence, it said, "If you want to waive late fees across the board, you got to go to council, you got to go call a meeting, go to council." That's all I got. That's not much coaching. That's blowing it off. That's blowing it off. That's, Mr. Mayor, I see you over there with your arms, like, I, that is not coaching. That is not saying, "Hey, here's what you do. Here's what you can go do. Go get a call people, talk about it, formulate your plan, blah, blah." That is saying, "I don't want to do it. I'm not going to do it. You go do it." That's not coaching. That's saying, that's refusing to do it. That's saying, "I don't want to do it. You can." Okay? And we're not here because that. We're here because some of us disagree with you, and I respect you. And I, like I told you, I will probably agree with 90% of the things you say in our time together, but this is one of them that I don't agree with. And I think it's important to the residents that we do meet and talk about this, and I hope they wouldn't come to this, because under the Norwood Codified Ordinances, Chapter 925, 07, Paragraph D, it states that the law, or the Safety Service Director has the authority to waive fees for up to 45 days. Now, if that's a power that has to come through council, especially when we're dealing with a pandemic, then why is it in there? Why is it in there if we're not going to enact it in a time of relief? I mean, I am not the smartest man in the world. I might not be the smartest man in this room, but I feel like, and I think others would agree, if there's ever a time of relief smacked us in the face, it's this. Not to mention just the high bill in general. Okay? So, I just want to make that clear, if I left any of that open to interpretation. Okay? The other part is, I'm not saying the city has a obligation to go and read people's meters every time. "Oh, we couldn't read your meters." No. What I'm saying is, the city has an obligation to provide a good, clear, and quality service to the residents of Norwood. Otherwise, if we cannot do that, we do not need to be in the water business. And what that means is, when we have people calling in numbers, mailing in their blue cards, they need to be inputted into the system so that our residents who are taking their time to do that get a good, clean, quality bill. And when they call in, if there's a problem, they get good, clean, quality customer service. They don't get blamed. They don't get told, "Oh, you got a leak. Sorry, figured it out." They take the time to look into it. It could be a leak. We do have some cases where there's some pretty severe leaks. We're working with them to figure it out. We're trying to help them out, get advice. Yeah, there's going to, it's going to happen. But that is not the problem. The problem is, we're lacking. Us as a city, in the water department, is lacking severely. Customer service, quality of work, and I don't think it's by, I don't think it's the workers in the water department just aren't doing a good enough job. I'm sure they work hard. I'm sure they work very hard. But I don't think they've had the quality management in the past to make sure that that standard is upheld. And I think it would be a gross disservice to not only them who are in there working hard, to the residents that expect a good bill, if we just let that keep going. And you don't work for us. That is correct. But who you do work for is the residents of Norwood. And when you do have the ability to suggest to your Safety Service Director an action that is well within the Norwood Codified Ordinances, and it's there for a reason, and you fail to act on that, you're not failing us. You don't work for us. It's the citizens of Norwood that put us all in these seats. So, again, you're not here to work for us. No, I get it. And Ms. Williams, in present miracle, I would like letters sent to the administration requesting an external audit, done by an outside company or corporation or whatever we have to do. And I would like, I would have liked, and I wanted our auditor department to do an audit of the water department themselves, since they do a fantastic job down there, and that's what they get paid to do. And speaking of people getting paid to do things, when I did first ask about this, I was notified, told that we have people at City Hall that get paid to do this job. Well, I get paid to do a job as well, and I'm doing that job right now. And I don't appreciate being told to not do that job, or to not get the tools I need to do that job, or to get poor responses about something that is beneficial to the residents of Norwood, needed by the residents of Norwood, and to be sitting here and having told everybody that I was coached to have this meeting. I was not. I don't think anybody here wants to take chances to just meet up about this when it could have been done before, and it could have been done before. I want to make that clear. This could have been done without us meeting today. It is in the Norwood Codified Ordinances, allowing for measures just like this to be done. And we're meeting here today because it was a choice not to do that. In my opinion, that was a poor choice, not to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Dracy?
Through the Chair of the Mayor. I guess if you're asking us to set up some sort of task force, then I'll be getting hold of the housing council members, and we'll have a housing committee, because I believe that falls within that realm, and we'll discuss options. As I've told other residents, a permanent solution is going to take a little time. It's going to take a little while. This here, this is temporary. I understand people don't, residents don't want something temporary, they want a permanent solution. However, I do understand that a permanent solution is not going to happen tomorrow. And when Councilman Kelch and I were talking on the phone, the items that I suggested within my notes here, he asked me about. He asked me, "How do we do this? How do we go about? What do we need to do?" My background as a police officer, this is how we do it. This is how an investigation is conducted, just as I had put in my notes. So, Mr. Mayor, if you're wanting us to do our own internal audit, then that's fine. I'll type up some notes, and I'll have the housing committee meet within, you know, next two or so weeks, and we'll come up with a plan, and we'll see what we can do as far as an internal audit.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Anyone else? Mr. Kelch?
You know, I don't think the letter's really going to do anything, sending a letter to the mayor. I would like to, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we instruct the mayor to seek outside quotes for an external audit, right here tonight, because I would like to get to a bottom, I would like to get to a solution. I think that's a step. I don't think sending a letter and waiting for that to happen is going to do it.
Mr. Thompson?
I just respond. The way that separation of powers happens, not only in local government, state government, national government, we aren't able to compel one branch to do anything that they aren't to do, just like they aren't able to compel us to do anything we want to do. That's why we send letters. Even when we pass resolutions or ordinances, we are giving the mayor permission to authorize something. That's why we need a signature on it, and he has to determine that he wants to do that. So, I don't believe that we can force the mayor to write a letter or to seek something if he does not want to, and if he does not. It's just the way it is. It's like you can't tell us to do something that we don't want to do. It just doesn't, so I understand your design, your frustration, but I still think that the letter is the best way to go, and if for some reason that is fruitless, we have our own investigation, that Mr. Dracy has volunteered, sort of, to start. Sorry, I don't know if he volunteered or not. And then we can do our own, you know, we can ask the auditor to do things on our behalf, but it's an ask. We can't, we can't direct as much as we want to.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I just wanted to concur with Mr. Thompson, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, if I agree with Mr. Thompson. That, yeah, I mean, we can't, there's been many issues in the past, I think, that councils of the past have wanted to compel something from the city administration, some minor, some bigger, but I mean, that's really not how it goes. I do want to respond, though, to the mayor, that when he asserted that council do our own audit, or that council hire an external auditor, you know, that's truly not the role of council either, because we don't, I mean, if an external auditor is going to be hired to do this, it has to be through the city administration, because the city administration has to be willing to work with them, willing to supply them all the information and data. And while a strike force, our, you know, the council committee taking this up is like, I think, very, very prudent, because there's many issues that, you know, we can discuss and try to work through, hiring an external auditor and directing them when the water department doesn't report to us or anybody else, I think is, you know, it's just, it's like a dream. I mean, it's not, it's not going to happen, so just wanted to make sure that's noted.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Kelch?
Yeah, I'll admit, there's a little bit of a learning curve here, and I might have got a little ahead of myself. However, I would like to change that to make a motion to approve the hiring of an outside firm to do an external audit of our water department, the finances, and the billing.
It's a point of order.
Well, we already, we have a motion on the floor right now, Mr. Kelch, and a second, so there's already a motion on the floor.
I'll wait.
Well, and it, I mean, another practical point of order is that if we're in a special council meeting, so I doubt that we could even do that anyways. We'd have to, I think we had to either, yeah, it'd have to be at a regular council meeting, because we haven't advertised that or notified the citizens or anything, that that motion or that action of council might be coming.
Mr. Gavin? Did you have something, sir?
No.
No?
Okay, I'm good.
Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Mr. Snyder may have a comment for us.
Yeah?
Through the Chair, please.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There is absolutely no reason for any council member to send me a letter requesting or requiring me to do anything. I will work with council members to work through this stuff. And we have been waiving fees now for years, utilizing the Ohio Revised Code, just exactly as Councilmember Kelch has been talking about. We've been waiving fees for years, utilizing that exact code. What we have not done is waived unilaterally fees across the board, and that is what the question really is with your ordinance that you're looking at today. So, Mr. Kelch, you're absolutely right, that is there, and the capability of waiving fees on an individual basis has been utilized for years and years within the city of Norwood. You guys are changing the plan, the way that is going to be done, and that's fine with me. But I do want to, I do want to help and make sure that everybody understands, each and every council member understands, the administration is here to work with you guys. Now, that doesn't mean we are going to hold your hand through every process. We are not the coach. I'm not the coach. You know, you have senior members of council that are very knowledgeable about how council runs and what you can and cannot do, and I recommend that, and I already think you're doing that. I already think you're utilizing those resources, and that's how it should be done, because everything doesn't come down through the administration and through the mayor's office. It's, you know, there is a separation for a reason. But clearly, I understand what you guys are trying to accomplish, and Councilmember Kelch, with all due respect, I understand your request, and I understand that there probably were times where, through this exchange, where you were talking to me five or six times a day, that I'd said, "You got to figure this one out. You know, go ahead and make it happen." But I probably did not give you as much input as maybe I should have, and I apologize if that's true, and it probably is from the message that you read. But I will work more to make sure that in the future, I provide as much information as I can, but I do ask that each of you utilize your council members, utilize- as I can, but I do ask that each of you utilize your council members, utilize your senior statesmen, and, and, you know, the resources that you have right there at your hands, because from the administration side, there's a lot going on, and there are a lot of things, internal things that we're working on, that quite frankly, I'd have to write a book every Friday to tell you all the things that we're working on. Clearly, there, there are improvements being made, you know, the superintendent of Public Works is working on these water issues, there's a lot going on. I can't tell council to formulate, put together a, a strike team or do anything, I mean, ultimately, I was saying, you can, you guys can do whatever you want, according to what the constraints are of, of council, but I'm here to help, and you don't have to send something to me saying, you know, categorically, do this. We'll, we'll get things done with, you know, cooperation, and we'll be productive and just move forward from there. We've been product, we have been extremely productive these last three months, and when I say "we," it is not just the administration and the people there, it's been you guys too. So, you know, let's continue that, and let's not build up any, any walls, and I really, sincerely believe we can move forward from this, and make improvements on the water system, and get some relief to people. I totally agree that's a good time, this is a stressful time for a lot of people, and move forward. But the administration's here to help you, and that's a fact.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Anyone else?
We have a motion by Mr. Kelch, and a second by Mr. Dracy, to suspend the rules, have all three readings of the ordinance extending time to pay residential water bills originally due between March 12, 2020, and August 12, 2020, to the last day of the month, following their due dates, and declaring an emergency.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Sure.
All members present, voting aye, the motion passes. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings?
Ordinance extending time to pay residential water bills originally due between March 12, 2020, and August 12, 2020, to the last day of the month, following their due dates, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending time to pay residential water bills originally due between March 12, 2020, and August 12, 2020, to the last day of the month, following their due dates, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending time to pay residential water bills originally due between March 12, 2020, and August 12, 2020, to the last day of the month, following their due dates, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to pass the ordinance, may I have a second? Mr. Kelch?
I'd like a second.
Second by Mr. Kelch. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Sure.
All members present, voting aye, the ordinance passes. Moving on to item F, consideration of Trex transfer application for Donna Cap LLC. Yep? I can talk? Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah. We all received a, a bunch of forms from the owner, Ben, and it was to address some of the questions that we had, we as a council presented to him. I know he's here tonight, so we can have him talk, I just know that we all received all this stuff.
Mr. Dracy?
Sorry, I wanted to try and get us in before he discusses, so that if he can answer any of the questions that we have, that might be a little better.
Okay.
Again, here's another one that I wrote some things down on, I did meet with Ben about, eh, maybe a week and a half ago. While I understand his intention, I've looked at this from an economical stand, development standpoint, and I believe Councilman Bonzel had brought up the, the basic four points under O R C 40 303.29, which basically starts out as taking a look at the financial investment into the project. I haven't seen a total number for the project, I've seen, I've seen a few of the things that were, or items that were sent out to us, so I'm just kind of trying to estimate based on what I've seen so far to date, around a $15,000 investment. That to me doesn't seem like a great investment for an economical development, for an economic development situation, seeing as what he would make had he get, if he does get this Trex transfer. Next, we need to look at the number of jobs. Number of jobs created, and again, this was all done before any, anybody had notified me, or, or talked to me, any residents. This was, this was done over the last three-ish weeks. You know, he had advised that there would be five to six employees. Okay, five to six employees, how many of those are family? Two to three, maybe, out of those five to six? How many of those family members are, are actually pulling in a paycheck from the business? I don't know. I can't answer that, but I do know that when my parents owned their business, I essentially worked for them for free, so I wasn't included in income. So, that's income that wouldn't come into the city, earnings income, and if they are, maybe they're making minimum wage, which, again, five to six employees at minimum wage isn't bringing in much earning tax to the city. And the, another item to look at through this is, what are the projected earnings from this? So, over the last two to three weeks, it's, it's been busy for me, I haven't gotten much sleep, so the numbers might be off. If a council member wants to call me out on the numbers, go for it. If a resident wants to call me out, go for it. I know Mr. Bonzel is great with numbers. But when I, when I met with Ben, I think I, I saw a sketch of maybe six tables at four, four place settings per table. On a 12-hour period during the day, you're looking at four people and three groups, because four people, to me, may stay about three hours. You know, you're not going to go in, sit down, have a beer, and walk out. Typically, if you're going into something like this, you're looking at staying for at least three hours, so I put, use that as an average, and use three groups. That's 96 people per day. Looking at, I don't know, maybe $6 a beer, I don't know how much craft beer goes for right now. I just threw in $6, thinking that was the tap-going rate. You're looking at about $1,728 per day, which I come out to about $630,000 per year. So, if just off the tap system, he is making $630,000 per year, but only putting $15,000 into it initially, without knowing where he's going to be going with the business, to me, it doesn't seem like it's an economic development project. To me, an economic development project is somebody that's coming in, taking a space and creating a better space out of it. I've seen bare minimum completed, yes, I've seen some plans, but it's been four weeks, it's been nice, it's been sunny. To me, I expected a little more done, to be honest. You know, I, I think somebody that wants something from us needs to go a little bit more than the bare minimum of what we asked, of what we wanted to see. And I, I don't feel that this project, or this, this Trex, fits into the economic development category. I don't see where it's, it's going to be anything to boost the city at this time, and that's, that's where I'm at with this. I, I, you know, I also feel that somebody that's paying, what, probably $5,000 for a Trex versus, I don't, I think it's, I'm not sure on the amount, it's either 20 or 200,000 for a regular license, is getting a steal and, and creating an influx of licenses within the city that doesn't need to be there. We're already negative one for permits that are available, and the only way that he's able to get this going is to do a Trex license, probably right around that $5,000 mark. So, he's getting a steal for something that he had to sell once for a lot more. So, you know, to me, I don't, I'm not, I'm not sold right now, to be honest, but that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I wanted to, well, first, I just wanted to thank Ben for, the applicant, for being here, and for all the work that he's done over the past month in order to comply with what we told him were our standards for what we were going to be looking at in order to get done. And he is, there's eight bullets here of, of things that he's done, or that he's ready to go, ready to execute on, you know, if he were to get the, the Trex. So I just want to go through the things that he has submitted to us. The first one was, we asked him to do yellow, to do striping on the parking lot, to ensure that people know, like, you know, exactly, you know, how to park, so that he can get as many people there as possible, so that they can maximize the space in front of it. The striping right now, like, the work's going to be done, he's got the agreement signed, and the work's going to be done. He's also, we asked him to paint that pole orange or something, so that people can see, and he's going to do that as well. On landscaping, you know, he put a few things out now, he said he's going to change it two to three times a year, again, I'm just reading from the email that he sent to all of us. He included a sign design in there, a design that complies with our sign code. So our sign code's pretty restrictive now on signs, so you can't, you can't just do anything you want, but the sign that he has does comply with that. He's got a color architect that's got the colors picked out, designed for the sides of the building and the front of the building. Parking agreement, so he reached out to Mr. DeLuca, Mr. DeLuca forwarded that email to all of us about a parking agreement, and to, we asked him to get an agreement with Mr. DeLuca to allow Mr. DeLuca's patrons in the new bar to park in front of his restaurant after 10 o'clock. I don't know if, I know that there was attempts made there, but he's committed that he is going to allow that to happen, no matter what. The front of the building lights and the electric, so they're taking out all of the old fixtures, updating them with modern LED lighting, and of course, he says he's going to obtain permits for this. We asked him to get involved in the community. He joined the Norwood Chamber of Commerce, so that letter was included. Also noted to be about Mr. Ron Murphy, or Lieutenant Ron Murphy, that he's, they, for years, they've given to the Pigs and Pens, the fundraiser that the Norwood Police Association has, and, you know, the applicant just hit, I mean, it was a stressful form, so I'm sure he forgot about that, but that is noted, that he already is involved in doing things. Then he also included the drawing inside, which Mr. Dracy talked about, and then the second bathroom. And then they're also going to replace the front window, which will allow light into the store, and, uh, light, excuse me, light into the store. So I just, I mean, I think that he has gone, definitely met what we asked him to do, and we gave him a lot of things to do in order to qualify for this, and he's gone out and done them. He's ready to execute on many of these things, once we approve the Trex or when the weather gets better, and it sounds like it's getting better now. So, you know, I personally am, I feel like he's, he's there, I'm excited about it. Going back to the economic development question, so the Ohio Revised Code's actually pretty clear here on, on this. So, it says that the superintendent of liquor control shall determine whether the existing or proposed business that is seeking a permit described in this section qualifies as an economic development project, and if the superintendent determines that it so qualifies, shall designate the business as an economic development project. It's not necessarily our job to determine whether it's an economic development project, it says it right in Ohio Revised Code, that that is the superintendent of liquor control's job. So let's just say that this gets signed off on, and he gets the, he get, he's able to get the application signed, it's the state still has to review it, and they can determine whether or not that it's an economic development project. So I guess I don't understand the argument there, if, if you're happy with everything else that, or if, you know, whoever is happy with everybody, everything that everybody else has done, or that he's done, that we've requested him to do, then to then go and pull out this economic development project as a justification to vote no, I find that disingenuous. Because it says right here, it is the superintendent of liquor control that shall determine that. So, you know, Mr. President, I'm ready to vote yes today on this, I think he's, he's done what he said, he's committed that he's going to get the things done that he has said he's going to do. And as we see too, with University Station, with just how that's kind of struggling, I think we need to have things that bring people into the community, and, and potentially, that's going to spin off to other people in the community. This has nothing to do with the economic development definition, but this just in general for that area, I think it's going to be good to have more people that, that come in, and I think this is going to attract people, especially, you know, the Cappy's name, that's so well-known out there. So I just, I can't believe we've been spending two months, you know, on this already, and I really hope that we can get this done today, because I, I think we should, and I just can't imagine a logical reason to vote no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Dracy?
Councilman Bonzel, I appreciate your responses, and your, you're reading off the nine bullet points that we requested of him, and I understand that. Again, I, I expected a little more than just doing the bare minimum of what we asked, to be honest. I, I kind of also did expect a little more to be accomplished at this point. I believe his striping said two to four weeks, and that was back in, what was that, March, I believe, from what I saw? Maybe February? I think it was the end of February. But, you know, this, and, and I get your, your point of liquor control decides whether or not this is an economic development, and it's not our decision. However, I don't believe liquor control is in the city of Norwood and sees what the city of Norwood does. I don't believe they come and inspect. If they do, and I'm wrong, then I'm wrong, but we know as a council what to expect in this city, or what to expect from this city, and that's where I'm coming from. I don't feel that there has been enough done to utilize this as an economic development transfer. There's just not enough there.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Anyone else? Mr. Kelch?
Thank you, Mr. President. For me, I mean, I got to meet with Ben personally, I, I mean, I think he's a, he's a pretty genuine guy, we had a pretty good conversation, he showed me a lot of the stuff he's wanting to do. He, he did meet certain things we, we wanted to see. I have a hangup on the parking agreement, the, I did get to read the email that he had originally sent to Mr. DeLuca, I did not see that in the original email, and it was later told to me that it was there, so I went back and double-checked. And I, after talking with Mr. DeLuca, shortly after I talked to Ben as well, I don't think the issue is parking for Mr. DeLuca's establishment. I think he's got ample parking there, I think the, the issues Mr. DeLuca's having was people parking in his lots and going to Cappy's. I think, you know, working something out there was, was, was the, the goal, at least at the time I thought in my head would, would been the, the plan, not, hey, you can park here. I mean, I don't think he's got a problem with parking, I don't think that's, that was kind of the idea there, for me at least. And then looking at some of the things Ben sent the other day, a lot, the problem I have with some of it is, some of it seemed conditional, and it seemed, hey, if I get this Trex transfer license, then I'm looking into doing a handicap, a second handicap bathroom or whatnot, and it, I just don't see that, I don't think that's very genuine and, and wise to have all these conditional kind of items. I understand, yeah, I need to get a little bit more revenue to kind of do these things, like, from that standpoint, I kind of understand it, but it's not made very clear, and I don't think the intention is, is what we think in that kind of front. The other thing is, some of these things that we asked, were asked, and I do recall saying that I feel like these are things that you would want to do anyway for your business, to make a successful business venture, whether it be making sure you have a nice storefront look, you know, quality parking, stuff like that. I mean, these are things you, you're going to want I mean, these are things you, you're going to want to do anyway for your business. And I've got no doubts that Ben is, is a quality business owner. I mean, his place in Loveland looks pretty good. I mean, but we're not seeing that here at the Norwood location, and even with these times, he's put together some, some sign drawings, paint schemes, stuff like that, but there's left, there's a lot that left, left, sorry, to be desired with action. I mean, the planners out front, all right, but, I mean, we could have seen some paint up, maybe. I know he's waiting for signs at the building department, stuff like that. But, and another thing for me is, why the need for a Trex license when, I'm sure there's bars or restaurant Norwood that has license that could have been sought after or maybe negotiated upon to keep our number of license down and, and keep the value for those license? That, those are some of the problems I have with it still. So I'm ready to vote, and I think Mr., I'm sorry, Ben, because I can't really pronounce his last name, will probably have some success with this, but he'll have to do it without my support, my vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I want to add is that I do have some, I do have a little experience with the Ohio Liquor Control Board, and when they do issue these licenses, they are invested in their license, and they check on them regularly, and they are, and I can tell you without doubt that they are in Norwood. And when they issue those licenses, they check up on them regularly. So when, when, so what was said was, you know, they're not in Norwood. Well, they are in Norwood undoubtedly, and they check up on their license. When they issue them, they check on them, and if there are violations, they catch them. So, and this happens daily. So I do know that equitably. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to play a little devil's advocate. I know I'm not going to change Mr. Dracy's or Mr. Kelch's mind. But when you say, we, as Mr. Bonzel said, we as a group gave a list of things that we wanted to see done and checked off, and, and we agreed on that. And so I agree with Mr. Bonzel in saying that, well, you would like to have seen a little bit more is a little disingenuous. If you would like to have seen more, we should have put it on that list, so we could check it off that list. Second is, is the amount of investment initially put in before the, the Trex transfer happens? We wouldn't expect a restaurant in Rookwood to completely build before we granted them a Trex license transfer in order to prove that they intend to open a certain kind of establishment. We would ask them to provide a number of plans, details, whatever, just like we did. So I, I think what you're, what you're expecting, or what you're wanting is, is unfair, because we wouldn't ask that of, of any other restaurant, bar establishment that was coming into town. We wouldn't say, build your establishment, make it look like how we want to, and then we'll consider giving you a Trex. There's no point in doing that, because they can invest us a large sum of money. We still might say, you can't have the Trex. As has happened right now, we said, do eight, nine things, we'll consider giving you a Trex. They did that. You're still deciding not to do that. So that's why I don't think we expect a, a large investment, because if he was to make a $100,000 investment, $200,000 investment, and we as a body decided, rightly or wrongly, that we didn't want to extend the Trex license, then, then that's, that's a waste of investment. And that's, I think that's deeper into this than we should be going. So I also want to state, I'm not really sure why this is on this particular agenda. This was not, in my opinion, worth an emergency meeting over. But since we've been stewing on this for a month and a half, it'd be nice to get it done with, I suppose. Also, I, I just would like to note that one of the reasons, maybe, I haven't got to talk, so I'm, I'm sorry, but I have gotten your emails, that things haven't got done, is we are in the middle of a global pandemic for about the entire time that we've given him to do some of these things. So the fact that, under the circumstances, he's done what he's asked, been asked to do, the police and the fire departments have said that they have no reason to do it, the governing body that grants the Trex has said that they believe it's an economic development, I'm leaning toward a yes vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Dracy?
I understand your point, Mr. Thompson, about not wanting him to throw in $100,000, $200,000 and us not extend the Trex, okay? However, you know, there are businesses, there are restaurants and bars that do put that money into it, and they go through the application process the correct, the proper way to do it. They spend the money.
He hasn't gone through the application process the correct and proper way?
He's found a loophole with the Trex, yes. I, I get that.
But, but you're saying, you just stated that it's not correct and proper.
He, he, he didn't do what other bars have done and bought it out right now.
No, but, but, but that's what Trex is.
Okay, well.
You know how many Trex?
Either way, I, I would, I would expect us to look into these just the way we have, mainly because we are trying to fix the city of Norwood. We are trying to fix the way we look. We don't, we, we don't want to look the way, we don't want to look like we've got broken down stores and broken down buildings. We want to fix that, that nostalgia, or that, that era of everything looks terrible. Okay? Now, I understand we're in the middle of a pandemic. However, I do know four contractors that are friends of mine who have been overbooked to do, to do projects. So getting these projects done shouldn't have been that much. I've painted my parents' business before to get it done. I mean, it's not, it's not hard to, to get a paintbrush and a roller out to paint the building. Four weeks, four weeks, we've been looking at this. Four weeks to allow, allow it to be, get done, let's put it that way. Two months, we've been on this. I hope that other businesses that look for a Trex get scrutinized just like we have done. Okay? And that's because I want to see a better environment for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Anyone else? Mr. DiNardo?
Yeah. I don't want, if you want to say something, I want to make sure. Yeah. Yeah, at this point, I, I feel we as a body, probably rightly, have said probably all we're going to say individually. Not that minds haven't changed, but I think we've been afforded the opportunity to say everything we needed to say. So I, I hope we're not talking about this again any further. I think we should use this opportunity. We're all here. Let's, if we can, I think we can vote, although it's not that we're actually voting for a particular thing, we're just voting to ask the law director to put a signature on something. So if anybody, if everybody's comfortable, I'd like to just kind of put this to bed, right, however this goes. And I'm kind of looking for anyone to raise their hand if they don't want to do that, but I don't think that's the case.
Mr. Bonzel?
I just want to note that, I mean, again, I think the credibility of this council is in question if there's members of this council that said previously that, look, if we get this, 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 this done, that, and then the person actually does it, finds other reasons and other, to just, to say no. And I just, I think it's, I, I just don't think it's a smart way for the council. So I do hope this passes, and I do want to vote on it today. I just want to make sure that's noted. And it was, before we vote on it, it is noted that, you know, that there's a previous council that said that they want to, they want to fix this city, they want to fix this city. And the plan is here to, to make Cappy's a such a much, an even nicer place, and they're going to vote no on it. And I guess I'm just frustrated, like, that could be something that could be fixed up and, and nicer. And there's so many possibilities too, to transform it even more, once the business model is approved. But you can't expect somebody to go and put in a second handicap bathroom for a carryout store. UDS don't even have bathrooms. I mean, I don't understand, like, why we're coming up with all these reasons to say no. So, again, though, I agree with Mr. DiNardo, I mean, let's just vote on it, but, you know, it's just disappointing to me that, just some of the things I've heard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? It's what's your pleasure, gentlemen? Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, so I'd want to make a motion that we authorize the clerk of council to sign the Trex form on behalf of council.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second by Mr. DiNardo. We have a motion by Mr. Bonzel, second by Mr. DiNardo, to authorize the law director to sign the Trex form.
Discussion.
I'm sorry?
Discussion.
Any further discussion?
I, I just want to say, if this is approved, Ben, I would strongly encourage you to reach out to Mr. DeLuca to try to work and bring down this wall between the two of yous. I've, I've met with both of you on several occasions. You both have very valid points, each of you. So whichever way this goes, I would just strongly encourage you to, to try to go and meet with him and see how we can, you, how, not we, you guys can get this resolved between the two of you, since you're neighbors. And, you know, it, it would make for a much better corner on that street and, and in that area if the two of you were, became allies instead of, you know, a war. So I would just strongly encourage that.
Any further discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
No.
Mr. Kelch?
No.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, we have five ayes, two nays, motion passes. Item G, excuse absent members, all members are present. Item H, adjournment. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Thompson. Please call a roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, we are adjourned.